Well, I uh, the last time I rented a tuxedo forever ago, I said I won't rent one of my tuxedo. I don't like renting whatever. And I got my white shirt out to put on, eighteen and a half with the buckle. Um, because I just. And I'm like, well, it'll be okay. I've been in these things before, I know. Yeah. I was there last year. I've been for years.
Have you ever used a collar at the stand?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I used to sell those.
But yeah, Anna told me, she's like, I'm not, not trying to brag, but your uh, renting your tuxedo costs like fifteen times more than my dress.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I know.
How much is it?
My rental probably two or three hundred dollars.
Two or three hundred dollars.
It was, it was always that when my last son got married.
I want, bought a ribbon.
Ribbon.
But I, um, only fifteen years or so. Jennifer, thank you.
Good morning, it's eight thirty. Welcome to the City of Easely Special Council Meeting. Um, today, we're gonna start with a public hearing. This is the second opportunity for anybody to speak or ask questions about the budget FYI twenty-five, twenty-six, and we will start with that. Um, so we're not gonna, are we gonna do slides or we're just gonna let people come up?
Just come up.
Okay, so I think if you're gonna come and speak, you may need to make sure the microphone is on.
It is, it's great.
Okay. Is there anything anybody would like to ask or speak about?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. Um, good morning, everyone. Kind of early, but uh, big concern of mine is not necessarily the fact that the budget's being increased by ten million dollars, but why and how's, and how's the cost being managed? Um, are we taking a one-time hit or is a new limit being established? Um, will there be a carryover into next year and years after to complete the expenditures initiated by this budget? And if so, how has the funding been established for that? I know we're only have, looking at a three mil increase, which is a little bit under four hundred thousand dollars as far as costs to the public, but um, where is the money coming from? I'm sure part of it is funds that if you don't use, you lose. Um, don't know how much that might be. But are we taking all the peanut butter from the jar so there'll be nothing left to add to the jelly sandwich next year? Um, I recently spoke with a grant writer who was going to help us at the Easely Museum, and she told me that for all practical purposes, federal grants that used to be available are no longer there. So in these harder times, is there not at least a compromise that can be developed? Do we have to go ten million over budget this year?
Ralph, can you speak, can you come speak to that, please?
Sure. Mayor Talbert, if I may ask a question, are we receiving public comments? Or is this a question and answer session?
Having an open dialogue.
Yeah.
Yes, it's open dialogue till we have to. Did you, did you wanna?
No, ma'am, I just wanted to ask about the procedure.
Okay.
As far as the increases go, um, one time, one year only would be hospitality fund. And we're basically, we have a bunch of money built up in a lot of these accounts that's built up over years and we're just spending it. So we have to ask the council for authority to break open the piggy bank and do big renovations. For example, Parks and Rec has a lot of renovations that they're gonna do. So, uh, one time only hospitality fund, five million. Impact fees on Parks and Rec, one point one million. Uh, impact fees, spending for, for fire, a hundred thousand. Uh, impact fees for police, hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Stormwater, two hundred and ninety. Community development, hundred and eighty-one. Road fee, uh, four hundred thousand. So that totals seven point three million. We also had a couple of things we did not budget for last year. So if you go from zero in FY twenty-five to spending money, that shows up as an increase too. So police activity fund, twenty-four grand, vehicle fund, thirty-one grand, and grant fund, a hundred and seventy grand increase. We're also spending uh, fund balance in the general fund. So that's nine hundred and eighty-four thousand. Uh, and when you consider all of those, that's about eight point four, uh, eight point five million. Um, there also are some transfers between funds which also count as revenue. And that's another, uh, seven hundred and eighteen thousand. So all told, that's nine point three million in things that will not be recurring. Um, and as Mr. Fetter mentioned, um, you know, the property tax increase is three hundred and ninety thousand. And then there's other funds that are increasing some beyond that. So that makes up the, I guess, the extra one million in the uh, fund, uh, general fund.
Mr. Fetter, did that answer your question?
Kinda sort of, sorry. Um, you mentioned that, oh. Thank you, Ralph. You mentioned that, uh, you know, certain funds have grown over the years and, and, you know, taking from them. Okay, are we leaving anything for future expenditures?
For the funds where we're spending fund balance, um, those are, for example, hospitality would be a recurring fund. So it would have more revenue coming in every year. Um, we are spending a big chunk of it, which will uh, decrease the balance that's in there, of course.
But hospitality tax is ongoing.
It's ongoing, yes. And that, that is another tax where it's not necessarily all city people. You know, you're driving down one twenty-three, you stop and eat lunch and you're paying the hospitality tax. So, um, that's a recurring fund. We are spending a big chunk of it. Um, the impact fees, for example, we're spending a piece of what's in there, um, but we're not spending all of it. But I guess the reality is that those funds are meant to be spent. So what we've done is hold it for bigger projects. And now we're saying, can we proceed with the bigger projects?
Ralph, excuse me, Ralph. Uh, would some of the fund balance be traceable, at least indirectly, to the ARPA funds?
Uh, general fund wise, yes, that would be true. Uh, so we did bring, uh, ten million and it's, it's called lost revenue. So your decrease in revenue that we experienced during COVID, we allocated ten million of the funds to that and that rolls into fund balance. So essentially, uh, directly or indirectly, as you said, that nine hundred and eighty-three thousand we're spending out of fund balance. It could be ARPA funds.
And that was one time?
That was one time.
At least so far.
Yeah, right. Um, and again, you know, you build up a bunch of money and instead of raising taxes in some other way, you're spending fund balance to cover what you need to do.
Ralph?
Yes.
I'm sorry. The uh, general fund you just mentioned, is that uh, the, auditors require so many months of that to be kept on hand? And what is that, uh, in round numbers?
In round numbers, we have eight million in there and they require three point five, which would be two months expenditures.
Okay, and that has enough, or does it have anything to do with the other ten million that we're talking about? The special revenue funds that we're talking about?
No, uh, special revenue funds are separate from the general fund balance. So a special revenue fund generates its own revenue and has its own expenses.
Do the auditors require a minimum in those special revenue funds?
No, um, for example, if the council voted to end a tax, you know, in a special fund, accommodations, hospitality, our share, whatever, then that fund could go away tomorrow. And we aren't required to keep any specific fund balances in there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. If, if we adopt this budget, what will be, so for the um, twenty-six, twenty-seven, I guess would be the next budget year. So if we adopt this budget, adopt the positions, everything like that, what will be the increase essentially that we're locking ourselves into? Do you know what the new recurring uh, cost will be?
Um, I would say essentially what you're talking about recurring wise is the general fund uh, that you're locking yourself into, and lock is a relative term. Uh, next year, you could vote to uh, reduce taxes or something. So, um, and that would be like the um, one million dollar difference between uh, what we're spending out of fund balance and revenue increases.
None of, none of the capital expenses from the special funds are gonna have any recurring cost?
Um, the capital expenditures from, well, we are allowed to use some of the hospitality expenses to cover things like, uh, you know, we're redoing the fields. And some of those hospitality funds can be used to cover the people that uh, go in and do the upkeep and such. I'm not sure if I.
But I mean, that would be, that would be, you know, assuming that we maintain everything. That, that would be an additional continuing expense, right?
Uh, right.
Maintaining.
But not the capital purchase itself. I don't, I wanna make sure I understand what you're asking. If there's money in there to pay for a new field, it's gonna be paid for one time.
Right.
Not every year. That's, is that what you're asking? Am I understanding?
Uh.
When you said capital.
Sure, and the, and this is just totally, let's say we made a new, um, a new, a new park. I mean, that, yeah, I understand that making the new park is a one-time expense. But then, you know, the ongoing maintenance, ongoing upkeep, I would consider that a recurring. But yeah, that, that answered it. Thank you.
What you're saying is this year's budget's basically twenty-eight million. And next year's budget will be twenty-eight million, plus or minus whatever changes we have next year. And that ten million is cash on hand, it's been accumulating for a pretty good while. Not just the last year or two, and, and we're spending it now. Right?
Right. You're voting to spend a large chunk of money that has accumulated over the years. So it's not an additional tax increase on people in order to spend that.
Our checkbook will still have an eight million dollar balance, right? You, you're gonna have eight million dollars on hand after all of this is said and done, not three point five?
Um, part of the budget is to spend fund balance. So it'd be eight million minus the nine hundred and eighty-three thousand that you're approving in the budget.
Okay, so we may have.
So seven point one.
Seven million.
Yeah.
Left over at the, at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Is the seven million over what's required to stay in there for the two months?
Right, it would be double what we're required to have in there.
That's what needs to be explained. It looks kinda bad on the surface 'cause you're spending money that might have been saved over a decade. But we've still got plenty on hand.
Right, it's kind of, um, unreal revenue because you've built up these uh, amounts of hospitality tax, for example, accumulated over several years, many years. And that, now we have to come back and say, we're gonna make it revenue again, basically.
So that we can spend.
Even though it came in in a prior year, but that's part of uh, the government accounting process, so.
So the seven million, that could be used like for the new fire department and we wouldn't have to incur debt on that?
Hmm, we would still wanna keep the required two months' balance. So if you're just looking at that particular situation, you could have three point five million to go to the fire station.
Okay.
But it's not a bad idea to keep more than two months.
Yeah.
Really.
Yeah.
We spend that, we got seven million, we're just set on that seven million forever. You know, invest it in crypto or something.
Um, there are regulations about what a municipality can invest in.
Right.
It doesn't include crypto, but.
That's why we have Ralph.
Yeah.
I was hoping Mr. Fetter would smile at me on that.
Ralph, I did have a question, just for clarification on impact fees. There are certain timing mechanisms that come into place there that those funds need to be spent.
Correct.
Okay, and then, um, a question that I have heard mentioned at council meetings is, um, and I know I broached it before, is that the biggest chunk of those impact fees go to Parks and Recreation and then it goes to police and then fire and transportation. And people have commented about how that's kinda catty-bumpus. Um, but that, those fees are, I mean, those designations are fixed until another study is done and doesn't, don't those studies run between sixty and seventy thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, Mario said yes.
I, I think our last estimate was seventy-seven, seven?
Yes, as far as the process, you're correct. You have to have a new study to reallocate between those four categories.
And reallocation being on card.
Ralph, I have a question. Um, what are the enterprise funds and where does that money come from and where does it go?
Um, enterprise funds will be things like, uh, stormwater. The, um, basically you could say it's generating its own revenue and having its own expenses.
Okay.
One comment on the impact fees. In the current year budget, we had, we were spending impact fees on the training room at the, at the police station and uh, grading the new fire station location. We didn't spend either one of those because, A, we didn't get the grant for the fire station. So we didn't go ahead with that expenditure and we didn't spend the money over at the fire, at the police station because the, the bids came in higher than we had allocated. So those were not being spent in the current year and they're being moved over to next year. The same thing could happen again, say for the fire station, if we don't get the grant and we don't wanna go forward with the fire station, we won't spend those impact fee funds to grade the new fire station because we don't have the money to do it yet. So.
So then it ends up being spent.
Right, we may not spend it, is what I'm saying. Yes, sir. Three years from it.
You have to commit.
Three years from when it's scheduled to be done.
Ralph says we have to commit to spend.
Right, and then spend, yeah.
I went to the, um, meeting the other day where, Tom, you presented the state of the city and I'm grateful for your presentation. During that, you mentioned the audit. We are sitting here today about to approve a budget without an audit complete. Now, you complained about that incessantly for years. So here we are again at a budget meeting where there is no audit complete. And when he presented at Green Finney last year, I, I stopped him and talked to him for a mi, for a brief moment. And he said he would see me in March. It's almost July one and you said it would be another couple of months. So here we are, getting ready to approve a ten point seven-five million increase in a budget with no audit. I think two of the council members said, what's the problem here? You can't blame it on Butch Womack anymore. So I'm asking you, why are we sitting here today with no audit complete? Um, I thank you for your question on capital expenditures. I think that if you had designated capital expenditures for this, a lot of these questions would have been alleviated. When you have people asking for more employees in departments that have vacancies, I don't know why they need more employees if they can't fill the vacancies that are on, that they have now. I believe in truth and transparency, real transparency. I don't like smoke and mirrors. And I'm here today to see who votes for this budget. Um, I'm pretty good at communications on truth. Thirty-six counties in South Carolina agree with me on that. Thank you.
I'd like to comment, please. Um, the state of the city was delivered by the mayor and our city administrator. And those are the two primary, uh, decision-makers in the city. We are the legislative body. As far as the audit, the reason, one of the reasons that this thing was delayed is because you had almost two years of bank statements that had not been reconciled, which had to, we had to, the city had to hire outside individual contract to reconcile those bank statements at a cost of over fifteen thousand dollars to the city, if I'm not mistaken. Some, something along those lines. So because of that, we are just getting into the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, probably twenty-four.
Okay, so please, Ralph, thank you.
As far as the audits go, in the past year, in October, they presented the FY twenty-three audit. And we are very close to completing the FY twenty-four audit. As they review all their paperwork that they, or schedules and such that they've done, they start asking more questions, so, um, and there are unique things where we have to get somebody from outside to render an opinion on arbitrage on the hospitality bonds. So, um, we are very close to getting it done. Um, and I would hope that we will present it, uh, soon in a council meeting.
Do you have any ETA?
Any ETA?
Last I heard was July. Didn't they say July, the last they sent us an email?
They did. Um, I would probably say July or August is when it will be presented. For example, the one, uh, outside evaluation we had to do, uh, it was just done. They emailed me, uh, both of those yesterday. So, uh, the auditors would evaluate that and roll it into the financial statements. So, um, doing that and changing, uh, other sections to accommodate uh, the, what the study had said about what we might owe for arbitrage is, uh, going to take a little more time, but I would not foresee it going beyond August when they present.
And to, uh, Councilwoman Davidson's point about the fifteen thousand dollars for the additional auditor, that was for the eighty thousand in unreconciled entries. That was existed, um, to find out what that was and where that was. And some of that may still be left, we don't know, but, um, we had to close in on that. And then the council, I think I was told the council can decide if we want to move forward with that auditing firm or maybe a different auditing firm after a certain number of, certain number of years.
The, um, it was brought up that auditors are engaged for four years at the most. So we do have a request for proposal out there for, uh, audits for the next four years, which would include, uh, FY twenty-five's audit. So we'll also be presenting something to you, uh, in July at the council meeting on who the auditors might be for the next four years.
Ralph?
Yes.
There's a state requirement about the audits have to be done within thirteen months. Are we gonna meet that period?
Um, the audit, I believe, will be done in thirteen mon, thirteen months would be the end of July, so I'll say yes.
Okay.
Um, it probably won't be presented until August to the council, but.
Okay.
It will be complete.
We could, can we get a copy? It will have a copy, Ralph, before presentation?
Yes.
Ralph, based on the work that has been done so far on this current audit, has there been any red flags which came to your attention?
Um, as, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Davidson mentioned, we were way behind on bank statements. And they're starting after that had occurred, basically. So could I, you expect a repeat of the two comments from the prior audit, FY twenty-three? Yes, you can expect that. Um, as far as new things that come out, um, I believe that we are addressing every question that they have. So I don't anticipate anything at this time beyond the two that, uh, occurred last year and we didn't have time to correct, basically.
So you don't expect any material deficiencies?
No, I don't.
As noted in the previous, okay, thank you very much.
I re, I really appreciate your, your expertise in answering and thank you so much for being a valuable resource.
You're very welcome, and I'll say all of this takes a team, so. Uh, congrats to Emily back here too, and, um, I would say our whole department works on some section of budgeting and, uh, forecasts and such. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, if not, we can move into our unfinished business, which is the second reading of our ordinance. Ordinance twenty-two thousand five oh six to provide for the adoption of a city annual operating budget, its execution and effect for the fiscal period of July one, twenty-two thousand five through June thirty, twenty-two thousand six.
I make a motion to approve this budget.
Second discussion?
Yes.
Um, I, I will have an amendment if another councilman does not first.
To, well, let's discuss it, we're discussing it.
Okay.
Justin is suggesting an amendment to.
The budget.
To.
The budget.
For what purpose?
Well, do you want me?
Yeah.
Well, let me ask.
Your amendment.
Are there any other council people that will have an amendment?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, then I will. All right, so, and I will read the text of the, of the amendment. Mr. Attorney, I, I believe I've got a copy for you. Do we have a?
Ready.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Do you have one?
I'm, uh, just, I'm not sure.
All right, so the, the amendment reads as follows. Budget amendment to allocate funds for the Canaan Land Roundabout Project. Whereas the Canaan Land Olive Street intersection is a five-way intersection. Whereas the local community has requested that this intersection be improved and to be made safer. Whereas the South Carolina Department of Transportation has performed traffic and engineering studies. Whereas SE DOT has held a public meeting in February twenty-two thousand five and displayed their draft proposal for roundabout at the intersection. Whereas the city of Easely's state senator has secured significant funds from the state for this project. And whereas our state senator has indicated that the city needs to make a good faith contribution to the project. And whereas it has been requested that the city allocate approximately four hundred thousand dollars toward the project. Now therefore, be it ordained by the mayor and the council, the city of Easely, South Carolina. In council assembled, that the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, twenty-two thousand five, twenty-two thousand five, six budget, is amended to provide that. The city allocate the three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars in the budget labeled as road fee fund towards the Canaan Land slash Olive Street intersection project. That the funds be sequestered or otherwise set aside and may only be used for this project. That the city administrator is to communicate the availability of the funds to the South Carolina Department of Transportation or other relevant entity. And that the remaining funds shall be returned to the general fund after, colon, SCDOT certifies that the project is completed or SCDOT certifies that the project has been abandoned or after three years from the passage of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. This is to make sure that these funds that we've been talking about are locked into completing that project. And this is done in lieu of my original amendment, which was to do this from four hundred thousand dollars of the general fund balance. Once it became apparent that we have this road fee fund, I wanna make sure that this gets locked in for this project.
I'll second the motion for the purpose of bringing it to discussion. That's not an indication. I'll vote in favor of it, but I'd like to hear discussion on it.
Okay, Evan, we've got a motion on the floor and a second motion, and we're discussing it. Do we need another motion to discuss this amendment?
You have your first, and you have your second, so we can get into discussion.
So if council decides to move forward with the amendment, we can, I can call for a question to amend as suggested, or do we need?
Yes, so if, if this, if you, yeah. So if what you have being presented, Councilman?
Alexander.
Alexander, if this is approved by vote right now, during, after discussion is done, then we can still move forward today with approving the budget as amm, with, with the amended.
So we don't need a new motion? I can call for a question to amend, to, to amend what's already on the floor?
Yeah, after discussion.
After discussion.
Before you step away, is the last paragraph, can that be done? Because we're talking about this budget, and if it doesn't get in this twenty-five, twenty-six budget, will this ordinance have to be redone for the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget?
So you're asking if, if this is, if this roundabout, that this is being allocated towards, if, if this project's not done during this fiscal year, it doesn't need to be re-approved for that?
Because the date's in here.
Right. I would, I would suggest that it does need to be placed back into the budget for next year. I mean, for, for the consecutive. So you would have to replace or...
Would it be smarter to take the date out or to vote again next year if the roundabout does not come to fruition in the next budget year? And Senator Rice does not, I don't think he's given us the time limit.
Well, I know in prior instances, we've had to move the fire trucks into the next year's budget. So would this be the same thing?
I would believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, and if, if that's a, if there's a technical requirement that, I mean, that's, I'd, I'd be fine with amending that.
I just wanna make sure that's...
Yeah, just taking out that last, that last part, the, or after three years from the passage? Or just take out the entire paragraph?
I guess what I'd, I'd like, Justin, I, I appreciate what, what, you know, the work that you've done on this. It would've been nice if, you know, we could have this in advance, so that...
Sure.
Our city administrator, I mean, city attorney, we have Evan here, but, I mean, this is kinda on the spot. Going back, and I reviewed the YouTube video of our last meeting, and I think I made some notes about some comments that Mr. Hughes has made. And about nineteen minutes in, he said because that there was some uncertainty with when this project will occur, that he didn't recommend us doing that. And just from experience with the Crestview Roundabout, I had had a conversation with Senator Rice long before that project ever came into being. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, Ralph had commented how that money is in the general fund, in the road fee. And so the money is in the budget for that project.
Right, he did say we could just agree to allocate it. I guess, so the concern is that we don't change our mind to allocate it?
Or spend it somewhere else.
Or spend it somewhere.
Yes, that we don't come up, you know, well, beyond that, that my understanding from Senator Rice is that we need some commitment to the funds, which has not occurred.
If I could clarify one point. Councilwoman Davidson mentioned in the general fund, this is actually in its own separate fund for road use. So it's in Fund thirteen, not Fund ten, the general fund.
So it's already, it's basically already set aside for road use?
Correct.
And I, I was headed to asking the question, is this necessary? Because I think the, the funds are in the budget in that category, and...
I think, what did they, last time, don't, don't we have a separate resolution from council to pledge for that roundabout? Wouldn't we have coming forward?
And you could say this is essentially that. Is a pledge to dedicate this money for that.
Which is what Justin suggested via amendment.
Ralph, the, says road fee fund, there's really no designation for it. Can we just put a designation in the budget as written it says, roundabout?
We changed the designation.
You're saying change the fund name?
Change, not the name, but designate it in the budget that it goes to the roundabout.
Like a line item?
Yes, ma'am. Similar to a capital item.
Right, so we do similar things. As Tom mentioned, we have capital items allocated within most of the funds as part of the budget. So, yes, we could allocate it to the roundabout.
And if they don't ask for the money during this current year, they've asked for a pledge, but if they don't ask for the money because they don't get around to it, we don't spend it. We just, the money stays in the, in our funds, and we do it again next year.
Correct. You'd wanna restrict it, allocate it to the roundabout next year again.
Yeah, I would think that would be simpler than having to modify this amendment and just change the designation. Because as Councilman Robinson has already mentioned, the money is in the budget. And I know that your concern was that there hadn't been a pledge, but I believe there was a time factor that had come into play with the conversation between the mayor and the senator that presented any, prevented any announcement prior to the count, previous council meeting because it was only days before that. So I think this is an easier remedy, is just designating it from that special fund or designated fund, or Fund thirteen. It's not the general fund.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think most of us are in favor of the roundabout anyway.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure.
The, the other thing I would say, you know, you may debate this in the next meeting, too. It's not like you pass the budget and July first, we're gonna spend the three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars out of that fund.
Because isn't this roundabout with the change of the wards in Ward six now?
Yes.
I don't know that the, I, we had a good turnout for that open house. I don't know that the sentiment would change by the people. I mean, it's the same people affected by the roundabout.
Oh, no, I see comments constantly how that needed, needs to be redone. And I think the city is wholeheartedly committed to this project. And so moving forward, the money is in the budget, changed the designation the way Ralph said. So I think we could just move forward voting on the budget without having a separate amendment.
Well, the, the issue is that the budget specifically says that all sums received by the city of Easely from any source, unless by law designated for some special fund or purpose, may be used, may be used in meeting dispersments from the general fund. I, I don't see any advantage of not locking this down. I mean, it, it doesn't sound like, unless I'm misunderstanding you, it doesn't sound like what you're proposing is that we're actually gonna designate anything today.
It's not in the general fund, though, I think what Ralph explained it.
You mentioned special funds, and this would be a special fund.
But what, what keeps that, I mean, what legally would keep that road fee fund from being used for some other purpose, of, of road, of road fees, of road purpose?
Legally, I would say there's not anything. Maybe you can answer that. Practically, you know, if we say we're gonna buy a fire truck, it'll cost two point six million, approve the financing, and we don't spend it that way, then you guys, I'm sure I wouldn't have a job, and Tom probably wouldn't have a job, so.
I have a question for Evan. If we do lock it in, if we do lock it in for whatever time period, if we take this year off or we lock it in, and let's say Senator Rice calls me next week and said the state of South Carolina is revoke those funds because we don't, you know, we're not gonna get them, can we do another paving project if we lock it into this?
So you're asking if this, well, I guess my question would be, has this money already been given to the city of Easely? Do we have this money?
No.
Yes.
I think we have this money.
This money is here.
We don't have the state's money. That's the state, yeah.
Well, I'm assuming that that roundabout would not just cost four hundred thousand dollars.
No, no.
Exactly.
The state has committed one point five million to it.
So that's...
If that changes, are we locked into having this?
No, the council can reallocate that money.
We can amend in the future.
And, and I...
So that would, that would require another amendment. Not doing this would not require amendment if we took that money for a different paving project.
I don't believe so, because that's why I put in that it, it would be released back to the general fund if the SCDOT certifies a project has been abandoned.
Okay, that answers my question.
But I think designating in the budget for this particular project will also give Senator Rice what he needs.
What do y'all think, any?
I agree with the spirit of the amendment. I'm concerned about unintended legal consequences or financial consequences, and it's difficult to predict unintended consequences. But the, the spirit of it certainly, I agree with.
Sure, and, and, and I'd be open to striking that three-year after the semicolon.
When you say unintended legal consequences, can you?
I, I don't know.
Are you referring to the date?
No, no, just, you know, things, things happen.
Our attorney for, for him to review, because usually these types of changes are reviewed by...
We'd have to have Evan.
Okay, but Evan...
Sure, and I can, I can speak to that.
Evan just probably received that.
Yeah, so this is very largely similar to, I, I assume that my prior, so as you know, I made a prior special meeting request with a proposed ordinance. This is very similar in form to that that was withdrawn. My understanding coming in today, and maybe I was, maybe I had misunderstood, but was that another council person was gonna offer a very similar amendment to the budget. And so I prepared this as a backup in case that didn't happen, and so.
But everybody wants the roundabout, and we've got an extra seven million dollars in our pocket. So that four hundred thousand's gonna be available. It's in there this year, and...
I think what Ralph proposed would be more than sufficient. That's my opinion, so I think if...
What would our attorney's opinion be? Is it cleaner to do the amendment? Is it better to do the amendment? Does it matter?
Are you proposing that pass the budget as presented today?
As presented, because Daniel had said that there was some uncertainty.
The council pass a resolution saying that the four hundred dollars that's already specif, specifically designated for this project can be assigned to this project?
I mean, everyone, we're on video, it's in the minutes, repeated discussions on this, that we are in support of that.
I think that would provide you more clarity on the money coming from the state.
I would like to have Senator Rice available to answer questions, you know, that might come up over it, too. But I, I mean, I don't... Whatever the majority of you guys...
I think either way is clean and, and can be done. You can either pass the, what's been proposed today and amend the budget, then present it and have, and vote on the budget today, or you can vote on it as is today. And then July, August, if you've had opportunity for your old state senator to come down and talk to you about the project, give you kind of more assurance about their portion of the funding coming through. It could provide you a little more targeted resolution on, okay, now we can allocate this four hundred thousand dollars to a specific project, because now maybe we have a more secure timeline on when this project can begin, now that the funds have been allocated.
And, and my, my concern is that, is that we'll walk out of here today having adopted a budget that does not include a commitment, so.
And I agree with Justin on that.
Anybody else?
I mean, I thought that after the last council meeting, it was my understanding that it was gonna be put into the budget, that it was gonna be allocated for that project.
And that's what Daniel said we could do. The allocation, he said, did not require amendment. But just like Evan just told us, I mean, we could do it either way. We could, we could pass a resolution to commit, and I think, I mean, I'm personally committed to the roundabout, and I think everybody else has spoken that they're personally committed to the, to the roundabout. It's just the concerns that Mr. Robinson presented and the fact that it might be cleaner, too, to have the senator involved in a separate resolution to do it. But I, you know, whatever y'all think, do I call for the question to add the amendment? Or do I call the, for the question as the motion was presented then? I don't...
Vote on the amendment.
I'm sorry? Vote on the amendment?
Vote on the amendment, the proposed amendment.
Well, let's, are we ready to do that? Is there more discussion? Okay.
Ralph, may I have a question?
Ralph, did you have a question? Or, or something to add before we?
I, I did have a question. So the ordinance says that any remaining funds shall be returned to the general fund. Technically, it's in the road fee fund.
Yes, thank you.
You're essentially saying, take it out of the road fee and move it into the general fund for spending on other purposes.
Very good catch. That was not my intent.
I think that's why we need, instead of rushing this, this document should go to Daniel and have a formal presentation, and we can do this. But there again, the safeguards are in place that, as Ralph has explained, that labeling can be done. And just would like to reiterate that Daniel had mentioned that due to the uncertainty of the timing of this project, he did not recommend this. So by having that separate designation on the, on that particular amount, we cover what we need, and again, we're all committed to the roundabout, so you can call for the question, and we'll see.
Wait a minute. I disagree with Ms. Davidson. We have an attorney here. He was sent here by Daniel, and I think he's capable of answering our questions. I don't agree that you don't think he's gonna be good enough that we need Daniel.
I did not suggest, and let me correct that case, there was any misinterpretation. Is that, to put him on the spot and not having been familiar with this. I don't think there's any rush, but there again, we'll do a vote and we'll see what happens.
And, and just to clarify and make sure that this is okay, I, I guess I don't, since I'm bringing the amendment, I guess I don't, we wouldn't need to vote on amending the amendment. But can we say that what we're voting on is the last paragraph being changed to that any remaining funds shall be returned to the road fee fund?
We'd have to, definitely, we'd have to do that.
Shall, shall remain in the road fee fund. It is in the road fee fund now. It's not in the general fund.
I think, are you talking about the remaining funds, meaning if they didn't spend the whole, let's say, four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, which you know they are.
And, and then striking the last or after three years from the passage? Because apparently we can only hard designate it for a year.
Right. Okay, all in favor of amending the proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five oh six to provide an amendment to allocate these funds, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing, because Justin did, but striking his comments that he suggested to remain in the road fee and to take off the three... but striking his, um, comments that he suggested to remain in the road fee and to take off the three years. All in favor of amending the budget with that, raise your hands. Okay, against? So now do we vote again to vote as the budget amended? Okay, so all in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh six to provide for the adoption of a city annual operating budget, its execution in effect for the fiscal period of July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, to allow the amendment to be processed to designate the paving fund for the road fee, all in favor, raise your hands.
Wait, wait. Are- are we voting now on the budget as amended, to adopt the budget as amended?
Yes, because we approved it, correct?
Okay.
We call for the question, they agreed to amend the budget, so we're voting on the budget for fiscal year, adding the amendment.
Sure. I just wanna make sure we're all on the page.
When our attorney puts it in writing, we'll have that to, to sign off on. All in favor, raise your hands. All opposed? Okay.
Okay, wait, 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 wait.
We just voted on the budget.
Oh, excuse me, I changed my vote then, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So I'm a yes for the budget.
Okay, so we're passed?
So y'all voted against the budget?
Yes.
With the amendment that you added?
Voted for the-
You voted-
No, I voted.
You voted against your own amendment?
No, ma'am.
He voted against the budget.
Voted against the budget. Which was amended.
Okay, all right.
Wow, that's confusing.
That's all the business-